Friday. All right, so we've had our opening ceremony. Any conflicts of interest on the agenda? Otherwise, we'll consider it approved. Madam Auditor, will you read the minutes of our previous meeting, please?
October 22nd, 2024, the Board of Supervisors met at 9:00 a.m. with Jean Hayden, Chair Presiding. Members present were Schultz, Dozark, Hayden, Mulbauer, and Rossberg. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. On motion, the Board recognized claims for public health and approved claims for all other departments. The Board approved the hiring of Dame Nemets Maintenance Employee Three Engineers Office. At 10:00 a.m., a motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Mulbauer to open the public hearing for the reclassification of a segment of 180th Street North of V Avenue from Service Area Road. We missed that letter. What was it? Was it a B?
B.
B to an A. Yeah.
It was a B to an A.
B to an A. Motion passed unanimously. There was no written objections or oral objections. At 10:01 a.m., motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Dozark to close the hearing. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Dozark, seconded by Schultz, to approve the following resolution, Crawford County Resolution 2024-33, sorry, reclassifying certain secondary road from area service V Road to area service A Road. Voting aye, Schultz, Dozark, Hayden, Mulbauer, and Rossberg. Motion passed unanimously. At 10:05, a motion was made by Rossberg, seconded by Dozark, to open the public hearing for reclassification of a segment of R Avenue lying between County Road M14 and 210th Street from area service Road B to area service Road C. Motion was passed unanimously. Keith Brady had a written concern. Ted Bleisman and Jim Reiser had oral concerns. At 10:23 a.m., a motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Rossberg, to close the hearing. Motion passed unanimously. No action was taken at this time for Resolution 2024-34 related to the reclassification of a portion of R Avenue lying west of 210th from Level B area service road to Level C area service road. A motion was made by Dozark, seconded by Schultz, to approve the Crawford County pledge in support of strategies outlined in Iowa's five years Strategic Highway Safety Plan. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Rossberg, to approve the redundant Internet connection at CCC S Building, 16 months, $450 a month. It says, "or a one-time of $5,000." Isn't it "and a one-time of $5,000"?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll make it "and." Motion passed unanimously. On motion duly seconded, the Board adjourned at 11:00, 11:00 a.m. Agendas for the next meeting are posted available at the courthouse on Friday, 4:30 p.m. Proceeding to our next meeting.
All right, we need to march into it. Otherwise, we'll call the minutes if they're best read. Okay. Ready? I will start today just for a minute because I know you guys are all dying to know what the Mental Health and the regional board decided to do.
Chair, though, before you go, I would think after the light of the email that we received on ID first in regard to that redundant Internet loop, I've been in old business, which let knowing that that action needs to be rescinded because it was a false information that we were given and he was unaware of at the time. So, I don't know, we can take action, being in this old business, that we need to rescind that motion.
Probably needs to be on an agenda.
Does it?
I'm guessing. I don't know.
Is this where we're going to take action? So if it's on the next agenda, you think that'll work?
I think we should at least get it on next agenda to rescind that action.
Okay. Till we work out another.
The details and the truth?
Yeah.
And can we change?
I don't think anybody meant to lie or anything.
No, I don't think.
No, 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 no.
Just confusing in messaging.
We didn't have all the facts.
Too many details that were in the weeds and things, so.
Just the confusion in messaging.
Can we change the word redundant to backup?
Yeah, I don't think it will.
Nobody's trying to pull faster.
No.
Well, whatever that language needs to be. Are you just rescinding that action at this time?
We're just going to rescind the whole action at this time in regard to redundancy.
Backup redundancy seems.
We'll get that language from Jake, whatever it is.
Okay, now you can talk about your mental health.
Okay, we did express our concern about selling those buildings versus deeding them. And so it was decided by the Benetts Board last week on a Wednesday that they're just going to deed those properties over to the Suland Mental Health in Fat City. If they sold them, it was going to be, well, number one, the services would no longer be provided. And that was the biggest concern of the regional board, that without those buildings, they couldn't have those services, which are so instrumental to our mental health.
But they don't own them.
They were, and I asked, you know, have attorneys vetted the 28E Verbeach? And the region's attorney and BB's attorney, and I do believe Carol's attorney have looked it over? And the language for deeding it, it's okay to deed it. But if they had sold it, then that was going to be an issue of where we were going to hold these services and the money that was proportionally given to these buildings by the counties. And it was brought up that the state at that time had given about $3.26 million into that kitty sold by the time that money got divided. But the number one concern that was brought up is where would these services be provided? And in the bigger picture of what's the best for mental health in Iowa, you know, we need to have a building that when somebody's having a mental episode, that there's some place they can go without those buildings. We have no services.
So couldn't lease it, couldn't do anything, just give it to them?
Deed it over.
A private entity.
And.
Well, just give it to them.
And we don't know who the ASOs are going to be at this time.
That's my thing is, what if the ASO is a privatized company that comes in and says, "In two years, oh, we can't make this work. We're in a subtle building. See you later. Thanks for the asset." Right. Leave and walk out of state. We already seen.
No right of first refusal stuff, no contingency within the.
Dave, you got a tractor I can borrow.
Right, I mean.
It will still.
At what point does this not shock the shit out of you, pardon my friend?
But don't you feel like, I told Jean this earlier, it feels like there was an alternate agenda.
I know you tried.
No, no, I'm not.
You haven't. It's not against you.
No, it's not.
But it's like there's an agenda. Let's take away the supervisor's power.
I'm aghast by that.
By the region.
In the bigger picture, what's best for mental health in Iowa is to have buildings, you know, that's.
I get that, but we could do a lot of ways other than just giving government property to a private agency.
Well, right now it belongs to, it'll belong to Suland Mental Health, which, you know, how they get into the weeds on that will be for attorneys.
Unless Suland leases it back to whoever becomes the ASO.
And they, you know.
Well, you don't.
What's the entity that makes up Suland?
Well, I vote no.
Suland Mental Health is the new.
That's who's been running it, Suland. That's Nikki and.
Oh, my God.
But that's just an update. We can't stew over things that we have known. It's kind of that.
Is that unanimous decision?
Well, I can stew over it. I just don't know if it goes any good.
It would seem suspicious that, "Let's take away supervisor's ability to vote on something, and then I'll take your property."
Mental health in Iowa.
No.
Take away the facilities that.
Your question, Craig, was a unanimous vote. It was unanimous by those that could vote.
Right.
Not just the liaison.
Because Dennis and Carol, Carol wrote a letter and I sent an email, you know, of our wishes with the. But that's what the problem with advisory capacity is. You can advise, but you don't get to vote at the end of the day.
Well, if the state screws this up and we get handed it back, I'm not interested in being part of a corporation like that.
The state is excited about rolling out wonderful.
That ought to scare the shit out of you.
They've already had it. I thought it was my obligation to just update you on what happened, and so we can move on.
No. Thank you for the information.
You're welcome. I'm just a messy speaker. Everything is all good. So, anybody else have anything that they would like to talk about today?
Thank you, Jean. Don't take it personal.
Go ahead for Yes Center.
I can't imagine you were any less.
All right, Kyle's going to keep the good news going.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kyle.
There's still a Yes Center meeting Friday. Cheryl and the other leaders are still trying to work on a reimbursement rate that's fair and equitable across the state amongst the others. Basically, now it's based off of expenses, which is not really a fair way of doing it. It's currently Polk County has just doubled the size of Cherokee. $3 million from the state and the Yes Center gets $140,000.
Not real fair.
Not real fair.
And I think that $3 million comes in the Christmas tree bill at the end of the year.
Yep, it's all there. I think about everybody, even Cheryl and Tony have kind of almost gotten bent together on some of this to where they're trying to come together and get a fair and equitable. Polk County's the one really fighting.
They're probably the only one anymore.
Even Lynn County's wanting to play fair because they got their new center built already, so their expenses are all paid for. So now they want to, now they want to be on the other side to get a bed days.
Kyle, do you remember this was brought up at ISAC a few years ago when the state was giving that extra money? And someone piped up in the meeting and said, "Well, let's spend our money on buses and we'll just bus our people to Polk County."
Yep.
They get all the extra money.
Yep.
Well, here's the interesting part, if you don't mind me. This was at our discussion at Central Iowa this week. Because they got that new facility that everybody's been, you know, and they had more room, now we keep getting all the worst cases even from Polk County.
Yeah, they show.
And you were probably getting some of them too for a while there.
Yep.
They sent their worst people, so they don't have to mess with them because they require more people, they require more. Their stuff, services get shipped in. You can't, they can't do anything with them in the center, so they got to have cop, you know, the law enforcement come in. And they're just, they're way more expensive to maintain and them adult charged ones. Some of them have been in there, I think we got one in almost two years. It's just insane. So if you're not getting paid for the bed days, you see the difference? Yeah, it's nuts.
Yep.
So it's all right. I wanted to help you out there.
I think it's gonna, I think there's actually people that are listening now.
You think so?
Yeah, the way it sounds.
Who are those people that are listening?
Would be, the money, the funding comes through the Department of Juvenile Corrections, I think.
Yeah, it's under DHS, isn't it?
Yeah, and I think they're making some headways on that. But, you know, and then Woodbury County one, that's kind of a, you know, they have like nobody in there, but their staff. They've got full staff.
Yeah.
And they don't take anybody, and there's nobody in there. So that's one of them expenses. So anyways.
If they're part of HHS, you guys just got done hammering on me about HHS.
Yeah.
Not you personally.
Not you personally. You're just an advisory.
We're giving you some information to advise that way.
And, yeah, we're not, I'm not saying this is any better. It's silly the way it is.
See what's going to be coming?
Yeah, I can see how the mental health districts will be funded as well. It's just going to be.
Don't get used to voting.
But other than that, you know, they just had one all-out riot up there a couple weeks ago and, you know, nobody really got hurt, you know? Nothing, nothing out of the ordinary.
For them, nearly.
Just all-out riot and nobody escaped and nothing like that, so. This is weird, right? When I first started going up there, there was really, you know, nothing really out of, you know, nothing other than an occasional window getting broken or something. Now it's just every month there's a small riot or small uprising or something, which is how it's.
But they can't do anything with the kids. I mean, they're basically, yeah, I get it. I can imagine why it's happening.
Makes me wonder what they mean by "small," you know, you know.
Well, I think that day there was whatever, 14 kids in there and 12 of them were fighting.
That's a big one to me. 12 kids with disciplination.
And then the one that was, I think one of the adult charged ones was the one that broke it up.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah, the most sensible one.
Well, that's what Tony's even commenting for. You know, they're actually not as hard to handle some of the younger ones that aren't charged for adult crimes.
So, but anyhow, that's about all I have, so lighten it up a little bit.
Lighten it up.
It'll come full circle.
It will. It will.
I was, Craig, I forwarded this housing readiness assessment thing to me and you felt that probably we needed somebody. To me, we're not ready for this because they're wondering if we have any needs assessments and it could be county, but this is more with the city of Dennison. You know, they have done housing studies year after year practically, which. But you have to have some kind of a comprehensive plan. Now, I can fill this out and it's going to be very vague because we don't have any detailed housing comprehensive plan, repousing lots, empty lots, inventory, upper story, downtown housing assessment or inventory, you know? We've never been party to anything. The only reason that I would.
We've been part of a housing.
Yes, we have.
You've been part of one. Did they go into Charter Oak in Dow City? How long ago was that?
2019 maybe, prior to COVID because it kind of all fell apart when COVID hit.
They had, they almost, I think they had it completed.
It was completed. We were going.
I don't know if they actually ever did anything with it.
Did I have a copy of it? And then if I have that, then the answer here, you're.
Did we ever get it?
CDC should have it as well.
You're approved by board, you know, so I'd be glad to just go through here and if I can get my.
I know we don't have a copy of it. The city of Dennison does. Stephanie Wees was on there. Yeah.
Ellen was on it. CDC.
Dave and I were on it. Every, every, every community was on it.
We should have one, but.
You want me to?
Because I think, didn't we pay for all the small towns?
Yeah, we paid for a good chunk.
I guess, Jean, I did take it as each individual filled that out. I took it as they wanted people to represent a committee and then the committee filled that out.
Well, how do you exclude?
I was, I just briefly read through it last night. I was kind of.
What do we want to do with it?
Representatives to form a committee is what I kind of.
We all agree that housing in our smaller communities really need, if there's any money.
I remember they really, plus we get Manellos, were really picked as great opportunities to develop.
Don't quote me. I want to say they said Manila needed like 25 to 30 new homes by like 2030. But yet here we are. We have two brand-new condos built by Region 12 that aren't sold yet. We have a Homes for Iowa home in Manila, hadn't sold yet.
Interest rates.
Studies say you need them. We build them, they don't sell.
But, and man, maybe higher interest rates.
Higher interest rates.
I was going to say, that's, I was going to just say that.
The housing market.
It's tough right now.
They said a lot of people weren't buying right now, and I think it's the interest rates. And I think more so than the interest, and this is my opinion, sorry to interrupt, but I think the fear of what the economy's got coming, I mean, there's a lot of people out there ensuring that they're going to have a job next week, you know, I should say a lot. But there's people out there that have fear of that, you know, and I, you know, maybe there's more of that. So I think the stability of the economy and all that stuff. I mean, I just read something the other day where somebody's laying off here in Iowa again.
I take that one step further, just to do, get over agricultural state. Has we seen commodity prices down?
There you go.
And the revenue not going on to the farm, which doesn't get passed on to the small towns of the businesses? I mean, it's a cycle downward.
Yeah, Iowa is actually a bottom-up economy because it starts at our farms and goes out from there.
Yeah.
It starts at the base.
Yeah, I know I got a kid that's looking for a house, but the starter home shouldn't cost $165, you know? With 7% interest?
Yep.
That's why he's like, I said, "Don't get hurt and move out." I said, "No, I'm going upside down right away."
He'll need somebody to mow the yard here anyway.
I'm sure that's happening. I'm sure that's happening a lot.
More than you want to know. So, I don't know.
So you want to be, you want to be the representative?
I think I want to.
What are your, what are your bankers telling you that they can say, I mean, to fart the loans and stuff? I mean, is that kind of what we're in?
People still need houses and, you know, we all remember, I had an 8% loan once on a house because I got to live someplace. So they're still doing some, but it's not as robust as it was back whenever there was a two in front of it. I remember when people wouldn't even come in unless there was a two in front of it, you know? Suddenly, we inched up to a three and an eight and they still wanted a two in front of it.
It wasn't, it wasn't as bad. It was seven in front of it when a nice house was $60,000 off.
That's true.
Yeah, great point, girl.
And, you know, by, there are any more taxes and insurance are more than the actual house payment, you know? So you look at that, what the insurance is and how hard it is even to get that. If you haven't had house insurance before, very few companies want to look at you, you know? So then you're paying a premium that first year and if you don't have 20% to put down, then you have to have the MI insurance and, you know, you have to be within a certain range of income to get the USDA 100% guaranteed loans, but they are even kind of adding some extra fees on that. So I understand why, but no.
So you want to respond to the city manager and just tell her that you will represent the county board of supervisors?
I will. There's a lot of information they're gathering on here, so, but I'd like that. So you think I can go to the city and get the 2019? Because I know the city.
I think it was 18, 19.
Yeah.
All right.
She took a while to do.
I'll do that.
20 years, so.
I'll drill into this a little bit further and.
And I think we were having meetings and then I told it, it all fell apart.
All right, I will follow up on that then. All right, Craig?
Rick, can you go with it? Couple things, I guess. Is Maureen Hanson from Iowa Department of Corrections, the district, retired. Replacing her is Jared Navi, and Jared has been on staff since 2012. And so he knows, I guess, the intricacies of everything that goes on there. And he just sent out an email, said he'd be happy to, you know, introduce himself to us. I just let him know when our meetings are that there's also Zoom links. He can do it or read one. Jared, so just want to make you aware of that. Last week, Dave and I met with representatives from Carroll County, I think Mark Beardmore and Mike Anderson were the two people from Carroll County Board of Supervisors. We met with Zoom. Carrie Kersey was also there. We kind of went over the environmental position and really where we're at. And Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but we only have had a few months of the increased rates that we were charging because it really started the new fiscal year, July 1. So we really won't know anything until a year from now when they've been able to charge those for the whole year. So we're just going to be a year from now and go over. Does that count?
That's what I got. We asked about budgeting and they said, "Shouldn't be similar to last year, just budget."
Is that what they're talking about? Okay.
They thought we were more equitable and fair with the increase to $40,000 for our portion to carry what our 2018 says.
Are they going to sign it?
Yeah, they're going to sign it.
Anytime soon?
I sure hope so.
I hope so. Be nice to have a signed copy.
They all voted on it.
Yeah, that's what I, I want to.
I don't know what the big thing is. Sign and get it sent over, but.
I mean, if they have issues with something, they need to handle that beyond the 2018 probably.
But as far as, well, the 2018 really, if they have any other issues, it still should be the same no matter who's providing it. We did ask about the mileage and how their billing works out. There is no mileage ever charged.
Okay.
And Craig, correct me if I'm wrong, it's, she looks at, "How much time am I spending in Crawford? How much time am I spending in Carroll?" And it's about that 60-40 split. So then she takes her total overall cost and it's your cost, it's their cost.
Yep, that's exactly how it is.
She's been at Crawford a lot this last week.
60-40 Carroll, 60% Carroll, 40% Crawford. It's kind of historically how it's been.
Been at Crawford a lot.
Which actually, we probably gain a little bit because, like Mike said, well, they're providing the car, the vehicle and the fuel and insurance on it, but we typically just split. And she had that into her cost, but typically she does her time and her time and here's my total cost and.
But I guess getting into the weeds pretty deep, is her time in Crawford start when she leaves Carroll County? You know, as far as windshield time driving here, to me, that's part of it because if you get a call to go look at a septic system in Carroll County, you're 10 minutes to it, 30 minutes, and it's an hour.
She did say she tries to, especially with like wells, line it up so I have five different wells I look at in Crawford County at one time.
Okay.
Well, they get phone calls, they get phone calls and they'll say, "Well, we're going there on Wednesday, so I'm not going to go there on Thursday. We meet on Wednesday or we set it up for another time when I've got multiple."
Now, she did say septic systems are more challenging to do that because you have different projects at different stages, so sometimes I just have to go to one or the other and I can't hold them all off till one day.
And I think she's as fair as she possibly can be. I mean, it's like she said, "I don't paper or whatever, you know, I don't take 60% of the paper cost. It's just the overall cost of everything that goes into it being, you know, whatever that entails, utilities, everything, and just divide that based on, she just estimates the time that I spend is 60% Carroll, 40% in Crawford, therefore, you know, 40% of everything from gets built."
The one thing she did say she splits 50-50 is like continuing to add classes.
Right.
Because she said, "Either way, Crawford's going to need an environmental health certified person, so does Carroll." So that's 50-50.
Any sense as she described it?
Yep, I think.
I thought it was a good meeting and I'm glad we had it. I think it'd be good for us down the road to continue and which we talked about every sober-ish, well, the examiners.
Well, they did, you know, she did meet one last time with the issue that we had with the sale of that property and hammered it out, walked it out, measured it out, and then she sent along an email on the options that the DNR could see based on the space. And it's my understanding that a tank actually went in on Friday. Not even driven out there, but today I plan on doing that because.
So that drawing that Chad had, that is what they ended up doing?
Very similar, yes. Yeah, there was, you know, a lot of discussions on how they could make that work and a lot of. So I do appreciate everybody being there, you know? My reason for being there was just to, it was kind, because they, it was kind of like, "We've worked together a long time." You know, yes, 21 years. So they were really coming down and saying, "You got to trust what I'm telling you," and she just needed to verify it with the DNR and got the options and they, it's a deal. So it did take a while. It was some hammering. There is hammering, but.
But Mel, that for future reference.
Correct. All right, so just an update on that one.
So the other thing, I mean, Dave and I, I guess Terry was there too, we had an IT meeting last week.
Is that your agenda?
Yes.
Wow.
Yes.
Yeah, wow, yeah.
Guess just going through it, texting to Citizen Project is a project that they're just starting where the auditor, I guess, Veterans Treasure could text to citizens. Citizens could text back. That's something that Jake is just starting. I don't know if he told us that when it'd be completed. Have you worried?
I'm still looking for software to be implemented.
I still don't. I showed an interest, but I'm not sure how it's going to work. You know what I mean? I'm still not sure what it looks like because I think it's like texting via email, not. But it'll look like a text to them, but it'll come back to us in the form of, I don't know, that's what.
Text on their phone and it'll come to an email for you?
I think. I don't know.
I have a question. I've got election brain, so it's not really a great time for me to be thinking about. Why do we need that? What's the?
Similar to hospitals, like convenience, you know, hey, you have a reminder and appointment.
Right, just another quick and easy way to communicate with our. Right, just another quick and easy way to communicate with our constituents about taxes, you know, oh, your, your payment was short, or your this or that, or the funds you sent for motor vehicle were not, you know what I mean? Come and see us in the office about it, or, I don't know, just simple things if we don't have. I don't know, I don't know.
Can I ask how much that's gonna cost?
I have no idea.
We don't know.
We just, is just talking of the, being able to implement something like that or even if it's feasible. I, I did find out Craig on that note. I talked to our chair for MRHC. And our hospital does text out appointment reminders, different clinics going on, things like that. Um, that however, is being implemented through Meditech, which is a software program the hospital uses that the providers and nurses use. So as they enter patient's data, then that triggers texts back out. So it's, it wouldn't really be.
Yeah, I don't know how this is gonna operate.
Special to the hospital, so I.
So they're gonna send out a mass text to my phone, similar to what I get three hundred a day now during the election season? And tell me that my taxes are due, although I hear it on the radio and I see it in the newspaper and I just kinda know?
Potentially, yeah, I mean, if that's what you would want to, yeah. If there are so chooses, they could do that.
And it seems like, if you.
I don't know.
Can remember, but Martha mentioned that they have clients where they can text but not call. And so, which I didn't even know you could have a phone and not call, just text.
Well.
But, um, she mentioned that, I think.
Good luck trying calling that one. It's a text I get every day, you know what I'm saying?
Well, they love you. That's why you get that text.
I don't need that much love every day. I know, but I don't really need that from my county.
Well, they're still exploring.
Right.
Jake's just in the beginning process of it.
Can I ask, are, are you, are you intrigued by it? Or do you think it's gonna be great?
I have no idea. I don't. It was brought to me and it's like
Lord of God.
I could see it being a benefit like during elections, cause we get, we get forms in that aren't signed and they have to be signed and sometimes it's hard to get ahold of people and.
Some people only answer.
And you can't, yeah, some people will.
Getting that way.
Yeah, only answer a text and don't answer their phones and you leave a message and, but some people don't know how to access messages.
Some people don't shut up?
Right, they're voicemail.
It's full.
How often do you, yeah.
Or it's full.
It's full, more times than that.
Tell that person they're, uh, they're like, I know, I don't want anybody leaving me messages.
I mean, some people don't listen to the radio and some people don't have a newspaper, so you don't have a way to get, even though you've crap out of stuff, but they still don't know what they ought to know by now, but.
Can I feel sorry for all those people?
I don't know. I don't feel sorry for them, but I just wanna be able to tell them what they need to know.
Changing and.
I just wanna let them know. Here, this is what you need to know today.
And how much will that all cost? And is it really?
I don't know.
Yeah, you're, you're not wrong.
No, I get that.
Something different. I know my kids don't, they tell them turn ADSN on, they wouldn't want to be.
Wouldn't you know what that is?
How, how do you get to that?
I'm gonna do that.
If it's not on Sirius XM, then they're not, or whatever, or whatever the things are, I'm sure it's.
Well, my fact that, anyway. Sandy Bucky reached out to me about a potential cryptocurrency ordinance in Monona County.
Right.
I mean, the things that we're discussing is mind blowing because it's technology changing.
Rapidly.
Okay, I'm good with all of it.
Well, we truly are. I would say we are just researching.
I get it. I'm just playing.
What else have you guys all talked about during that?
Yeah.
Nothing, then we adjourned.
I would love a slate for the whole conversation.
We're, we did, uh, as far as the outside doors are concerned, as far as locking the, uh, outside door, having an automatic lock, from talking to Corey Gasco, the cost is gonna be, uh, right around ten thousand dollars. They actually have, is it CISA? It's a federal agency that's coming in to do an assessment around the week of January twentieth. And they will look at both the external access to the courthouse and the internal doors that we have at the courthouse to kinda give us an assessment as to a free assessment, as to, so so let everybody know it's free assessment. As for what we, you know, we may be able to do moving forward, what would be the best uh, options moving forward. And so that's the week of January twentieth. So like I said, he had talked to Corey, Corey got mentioned for that exterior doors. We haven't got a bid, haven't set up a date to do anything, just kinda looking at what that may cost. I sit, a test, uh, assessment.
ICIT?
ICIT. Cost to do that, it looks like to me, what was it, four thousand dollars?
Second assessment.
Last one they did was in twenty eighteen, so it's been six years and.
That's when they come in from other IT people.
Other IT people from other counties.
Gil Roney kind of.
Come back in and I think that's when they came here and did the assessment and after that assessment, we hired an IT person.
Yes.
Yeah. And so, I, I think anyway, that it would be good to see where we were at in twenty eighteen before we got an IT person and where we're at now. And maybe even the money we've spent from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-four and was it worth it all? Is it worth it all?
Right.
To get us to where.
Four thousand dollars.
Well, we just looked at spending forty thousand on an redundant system that is a backup. Do we need that? Do we not need that?
Right.
Right. And, and to add to what Craig said, I think it's gonna be very valuable too, not just what we spend where we at today to accomplish what we meant to with the first assessment. Where are we going from today to the next five or ten years?
Right.
I agree.
Right.
I think that that would be.
I think it's smart, smart money.
I think so.
I'll agree with that.
I, I would like to take a few zeros off every dumb to internet and spend it towards this.
I agree.
Write that down, I agree.
I think your earlier suggestions, bottom.
Especially when you look at the amount of dollars where IT is needing or wanting to have. Do we need it? Do we not? How do you walk that fine line, right?
Well, it's been pretty obvious over the last three and a half years that IT's not gonna get cheaper. So we gotta find ways to make sure that we're not you know what I mean?
Well, if the kids would just listen to the radio.
It's just like your HTS ag. They're trying to say the newest and greatest ag leaders to gotta have. I mean, and.
I know, I know.
One topic of discussion, it was too bad that Martha had a dental appointment and had to leave.
Oh, right.
But, I mean, we, we talked a little bit about, um, the memorandum of, of agreement. That's created with each department head, elected official. And are they required, or should they be required to use the IT at the courthouse? Or can they opt out? Because I'm an elected official, I choose to get my IT from somewhere else.
That does happen, yeah.
And, so, it, and Martha would kinda was in favor of having that option, I believe, is what she stated before she left. And then we really started talking about it, is that, is that, where does that fall into with the realm of the supervisors? And I, cause I thought about this after I left, cause the supervisors are kind of in charge of the courthouse. And in their absence, they, I think, put the auditor kind of as that person or go-to individual.
Iowa code does.
Iowa code does that.
Yeah.
And so, does this fall under that Iowa code that states that this is something that the supervisors are, are in control of?
It's infrastructure within the courthouse system, so to me, it should be probably something, you know? Otherwise, just look at how it could get so much more expensive when, I mean, how do you even manage that? I mean, we don't know what's going on with, like, I, I mean, I, I'm assuming that Bradley and them are doing a great job looking after the budget as well, but we don't know. You know, I mean, is it more expensive than what Jake's doing, or would Jake be more expensive? I mean, is that out of Jake's skillset? I don't know, you know?
But Jake just mentioned that, I mean, he has a hard time, mate, you know, I can't foresaw say, hey, we're gonna do this when each elected official can come back and say, no, I'm not gonna do that. That's not the way we're, I, that's not the way I'm gonna run my chair here. Were we not kinda that way back in the teen years, each department?
Did their own thing.
Had money in everybody's budget for technology.
Right, well, for replacement of.
Computers.
Of computers and, um, printers and all the things.
IT stuff at the, at that time, that was.
We also had a data budget, which like covered the servers and the main print, like that main printer, and we used to have two more main printers back in the day, back where Chuck sits.
I mean, that's kinda where we were, IT was.
Yeah, it was all individual.
IT budget.
But we, they all functioned off the same server.
Right.
For the most part. And then what changed was the attorney came into the courthouse, so.
Oh, went to a full-time one.
That added, yeah, that added, you know, another level.
Kinda have his own or?
He does. He doesn't, he's not.
The sheriff.
He's not in the, yeah, and the sheriff is part of the whole law enforcement stuff.
But they're not the same too, they're.
No, they're separate.
IT providers.
And I think they will tell you, both the sheriff and the county attorney, that they have certain things according to Iowa code that are privacy things that they have, would have to be implemented, whether it's all under one umbrella or.
Just have concerns that if we would allow each department head to do their own thing, we'd be back to the budgeting nightmares that we.
I know.
We were when I first got on, you know, each department, well, I gotta have a hundred thousand for my IT stuff.
Yeah.
And we're having a continuity here. Potentially, we could have the auditor running cables for their stuff.
Yeah, right.
And elected officials change.
Right.
Yeah, great point.
But we currently allow two elected officials to have their own.
But the, the, yeah, they're kinda unique.
To themselves.
To themselves due to the state connections that they are.
Right.
Required to have for their offices.
Sure, I would say the same thing, that she has to communicate with the state.
DOT.
But some of that might naturally just sift itself out. I mean, as we can have a new sheriff come in as their current IT director, or we call him director, consultant, Rod.
Right.
You know, he, he may get to the point where he's gonna be fully retired, you know, some of that might just naturally shift in the direction of what we already have to provide.
I don't think we'd have trouble with security issues. I mean, obviously, there's investigation stuff and you know, I mean, that's gonna have to be of a sensitive nature. But we've also got, you know, health records and other types of things. There's, everybody's got something sensitive. You know, I, I think, I mean, I don't see Jake having difficulty maintaining that security nature.
I mean, it'd be nice, I guess, to get a real, cause you kinda like jump back up to the security of the doors.
Yeah.
Could the, we, we say, okay, here's what we're gonna do, and could an elected official say, well, this is not what I want in my office. I wanna do this. And we're like, oh, but we wanna have, I don't want security, I don't wanna.
It's not their building.
And that's, that's, that's the point. That's, that's, I agree with that. And that's what I'm saying, is, is the IT part of the building.
Right.
That's what I guess it's nice to have a legal
Yeah.
Opinion on IT, cause that's where I, when I thought about after I left the meeting, I said, to me, IT seems like it's more of an infrastructure thing, like a restroom or.
Right. I mean, cause, could we all have our own utilities? Could we all have our own?
Right.
Our own light, I want my light switch to be, you know, yeah, WIPCO and not DMU or.
Be unusual to ask our county attorney to give that opinion when he's one that has his own.
I think of a conflict.
Yeah, good point, good point.
I get it. I mean, I can see both sides of it really, but, um, but the way you're explaining it.
Let me read it to Christie.
That's who I was thinking.
Yeah.
To see if this has come up with other.
I'm sure it has.
County Board of Supervisors. I mean, and one thing, I guess, from, uh, we talk about EMA. Um, I, I mean, this really, is that we do share a server, uh, information with a Carroll location in case of a disaster. And Carroll does that also with Crawford. So if, you know, something would hit this courthouse, we would have access to a server in Carroll County, and Carroll County does the same thing with Crawford, I do remember. So, and I'll just turn it over to. Got anything else you wanna add? I mean, we're right, we're pushing.
Yeah, um, yeah, everything I had to report on was with Craig. We were at both IT and environmental health. Uh, IT, and you brought it up, Terry, you with some of the devices that Sherry had gotten questioned. Oh, Jake on that, and.
Yeah, I'm still not sure, cause I went in and was talking to someone over in the treasures, I think it was Amy. And she said, I think we can reprogram this for a lot less than, than what he's saying. So I don't, I, I, I have no idea. I don't know.
We don't have a card.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Elections had.
Mm-hmm. So there's a little bit of a difference.
Yes, yes. Does Sherry just explore it on her own? Or she's feeling like she shouldn't have to, that we should have, our IT should do that. I think it's the understanding that.
Which has.
I get it.
Going one step further, that's why I think the second assessment is that much more important, right?
To make sure that the road we're going down is the correct one.
Right.
So, that's.
Craig, you bring it up.
Early travel meeting today, um, had our first interview yesterday for CFO with Wesco. We have another one today.
Alright, very good. Dave, oh, good morning.
Good morning.
How you break the middle of our supervisors up? So Ty will give you a chance here a little bit.
I don't have a whole lot.
Alright, very good.
Go ahead.
You want?
No, 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 I, I, we have, no, you're here, do your job.
Let's stay on schedule.
Yours will take a half an hour.
My little bit can grow as it's going, yeah, I get it, I get it.
And we gotta get you back to work.
With a picture phone call, it's like, okay, I've been on at least twenty minutes. Your guys might all be gone for the day.
Call the gift of gab.
We can have a little fun, right? You gotta have a little fun.
That's right.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah. There we go, there's a couple going around that way.
Never hurt to have a reputation, Ty.
That's right.
I cornered him in a golf cart all day.
Oh, that was fun. That was a good time. Not a lot of, uh, new stuff here. Um, the, uh, project up on E sixteen, uh, continues to progress. Uh, you know, and, and so we're hoping they, they place what we call modified sub-ways, uh, we're putting concrete back in because that's what was there, you know, sometimes you'll put an asphalt surface in. Um, we like to go with concrete here. Just to kinda match everything that's there. Uh, so they'll hopefully pour that on Thursday or Friday. That's the schedule right now. The weather looks like it's gonna be really good for that. Um, and then they'll set for five days. And they'll have to do some shouldering, pavement markings and all that stuff, but I'm hopeful by the end of next week, it's very close to being open. Traffic. So, let's just hope that everything works out. But it's actually really good paving weather, highs in the sixties, lows in the forties, it's, you know? And it's supposed to rain over the weekend, it's perfect curing weather. And, uh, so, so that's kinda where that's at. And again, they're doing really nice work. It's just taking some time, so. Uh, the, uh, day labor stuff, uh, the guys are up here on Jay Avenue, if anybody wants to go up and take a look. There's not much today because we don't have a grain crew cause everybody's gone for a variety of reasons, so. Um, but, uh, just right up here by Vince Who Lands.
Oh.
Uh, we're doing that, that road there. And if any of you have been on that recently, I mean, it kinda winds and goes down and it's, I mean, you can't even get a combine through that road. So they're all pretty excited about getting that graded up so that they can use it. So, be a nice project. Um, Bridge Crew, they're still down on Three Forty Street. They're working on that, probably end of next week. They should be pretty close to finishing that up, and then they're gonna go south of, uh, Buck Row and work on the bridge. They're gonna pull out on W Avenue and put up. And we'll see where we go from there, you know? Usually get to Thanksgiving and things start to get colder. I mean, this is beautiful weather. We get an inch and a half of rain tonight, or tomorrow, it'd be awesome. Um, but, uh, we've just not had a rain day for a long time, you know? We had some spring rains, but we've just been able to continue to work and get a lot of good stuff done, so.
Being green, probably just a little friend asked about why I don't own that piece of his house.
That, that's on the list, that we're trying to get some signups. I think we're just having got everybody signed up.
Okay.
Well, I think. Well, and I think Shelby County's kind of.
I'm sure it grows, so it could be a drag without.
They're not as excited about it as we are, you know, and they've got a new engineer down there, and I think he's just not so sure that investment in a level B road maybe is something, you know, so that, we, we gotta kind of work through that a little bit.
I said I'd check them.
Yeah, so that's kind of where that's at. Maybe gonna do some investment in our level A's. I'm not gonna go there.
I'm just going, thinking as a friend.
But, uh, but that's kind of where that's at. There's some interest, we're, we're willing to do it, but it's a county line. So, um, the, uh, our avenue.
Thank you.
Everything worked out like it, we hoped it would, so I got a call from Keith Brady, and he said, you know, him and Jim would talk some more. You know, they didn't want to be the stick in the mud and hold things up, and they said, you know, we'll, let's, let's go where we had initially, initially proposed. Uh, we had Ted meet with, uh, he met with Troy, you know, so he could say, here's where I want the gate, you know, and if it's five, ten feet one way or the other from what it says here, I don't care. But anyhow, so that's, he's happy, uh, they're happy, and so we're gonna go ahead and move forward. Now, you know, you had the public hearing.
Yep.
So you heard the input, that'll be documented, and, and then what we'll want to say, I guess, is that in the minutes would reflect that we approved this resolution and that there, uh, there was, you know, consensus was arrived at by the parties uh, after the public hearing, and so that the resolution was approved to do it. And I think is probably how you'd want to reflect that, so, yeah, he was very good about it, he said, you know, we just we wanna be a good neighbor.
Yep.
Which was a really kind of neat, you know, they had a really good conversation with him. Had a bunch of adults at the table, how about that? Yeah, and it's, it really is their road, you know, I think that's important, you know, to understand is that we're just here taking care of it and trying to keep order, you know? Uh, but at the end of the day, if people want some things that make sense, and we can facilitate it, you try to do that. And, and here is a good example of how, you know, them coming together as the actual users of the road um, gain consensus and now we can move forward, so.
Go ahead, it worked out.
Yeah, so mine, I think it, it'll be good for everybody, um. It's still a road that we have to take care of, the really the fundamental difference between a level C and a level B is access. You put gates up, we still have to take care of the road, we still have to take care of down trees, we still have to blade it uh, and make sure that they have access. The best scenario here is to shape it up, seat it down, and hopefully we get some good grass cover on it. Yeah, so we don't have to do anything, that'll hold some of that erosion.
Yeah.
And we've done that before, you know, it takes a little nursing that to get some of the ruts filled in, but that's the best outcome you could have, is just get it seated down.
So if you seat it down, what's the maintenance that you do with it after seated? Is there anything?
Just go in and mow it periodically, or they just take care of it themselves, a lot of times, we don't do anything. We've done it on some, we've never gone back and done anything. Trees if they go down, yeah, yeah. Still our road, so we still have to take care of it, but it's very minimal at that point, so.
Very good. So it looks like we need a motion to approve that resolution.
I'm gonna give that motion to approve that resolution of reclassification, uh, our avenue between two hundred and, west of two hundred and tenth street from a level B to a level C.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Did we need to have the verbiage about having?
Just make sure that the verbiage, uh, states that there was a discussion on the public hearing, and then the mutual agreement was made after the public hearing and was brought to this board that their major agreement of all landowners. Of all landowners was made.
Yep.
In favor of the original resolution.
All right, any further discussion? It's a resolution, so I'll call the vote. Ty?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, resolution has been approved to reclassify that road. The way that goes.
Yeah, that's.
Thank you for all the work you did on that.
Close the circle on that, you know, but it worked out, yeah. Uh, so, you know, this is that time of the year, we're always trying to kind of forecast and predict, you know, equipment purchases for next year, and we haven't even looked at budgets yet. Um, and I'm never trying to persuade you to do anything, just kind of sharing with you that that, where we're at, uh. To, if we ordered a motor grader now, uh, it'd probably be April or May before we could get one. Um, you know, we like to try to get them to March so that we can get them ready, get them out there for the season. Um, that doesn't always work out, last time it didn't, uh, we didn't get that till later, but, um, they have actually gone down a little bit, uh, they must have, uh, some additional incentives, but it's four sixty-eight been changed, um, four seventy-five last year. Um, and so.
So they're cheap.
Four sixty-eight, four twenty-five, that's what the proposed price was. Not a lot, but it, it didn't go up, which was good. Um.
This very, very much change from snow.
This has the, so we're starting to include new wings, cause I mean, I've been here for almost twenty-five years now. We've only bought a couple of new wings in that whole time. They're getting made, they got some age on them, and so I just said, you know, we should probably over, uh, the next ten to twelve years, if we buy new wings with those, then we'll eventually have a good set of wings as well, cause they're, they're getting some age.
They take a beat.
They do, and, you know, the last four or five years, we haven't used them much, but we're gonna get those winners, we're really happy that we have had quality wings, I guess, on our machines.
I hope so. But we're coming the new American.
Yeah, so, uh, let's hold on, um, but from a climate standpoint, but, uh, anyhow, so you wanna think about it? Just sharing with you that, you know, we've got two that would trade, we're getting two new ones, and, um, so that would be a pretty big part of our equipment budget for each. Yeah, so.
That is one of our major mandates.
Well, it, it is, and so the truck fleet, the dump truck fleet will be, um, pretty current, will have, um, two twenty-twenty-one models, two twenty-twenty-three models, and two twenty-twenty-four model year dump trucks.
Those are tandems.
Tandems, you're right, and that is our fleet, we only, we have one spare that doesn't get used for snow removal, it just gets used as kind of a utility truck for hauling rip raft and hauling broken concrete, things that we don't want to put in our newer trucks. We'll have two pretty current single axle dump trucks, so our, our dump truck fleet will be in really good shape. And our motor grader fleet will be in really good shape, so after this, our, our oldest motor grader will be at twenty-nineteen. And it will, there's only one of those, so, um, so if we did this, we'd have a pretty current fleet of motor graders as well. Um, you know, and so.
How long do you keep that?
Uh, about ten to, ten to eleven years, you know, we try to get them up to about eleven to twelve thousand hours, somewhere in that range. Um, before we trade them, so. You know, and it's just one of those things, if you don't keep up with it, all of a sudden your fleet starts to age, that board's always been very supportive. Um, of trying to keep a fairly current fleet of, of motor graders, so.
They're doing a hard job, I mean, so they get used every day, at least during the summer, or the warm months.
Right now.
Where in terror happened?
Yeah, we've kind of talked about, and progressing a little bit, is it, you know, minimum place right now, you know, now when we get this rain, it's gonna be pretty messy out there, I guarantee you, there'll be phone calls because, I mean, we've been nothing but grinding up powder and trying to keep the road smooth for harvest, and now, you know, if we get rain, it'll be awesome. Get that rain, and then sunshine's Thursday and Friday, we'll be able to get out there and blade. It'll be, it'll be really good, but they're gonna be sloppy, uh, for a while, so.
Everybody will have an orange car.
Loads in country.
Yeah, and they're slopping them up, so. But, you know, this isn't an item to take action, this is just to kind of let you know that that's where we're at, so as we, you know, if we think about it, and just saying that, that's kind of a situation right now, um, so.
Just moving forward, you got these proposal in your, next year, your budget, what, uh, a dozer?
Possibly a dozer, you know, I don't know. That'd be a D four, I just don't know.
Just the bridge crew one you were talking about?
Well, this would be a combination, bridge crew, grade crew, but.
Do they offer that electric?
Even that size, um, I don't know if there is or not, I'm not sure, you know.
I'm really impressed with it.
Yeah, yeah, oh, it's a great machine, so, um, you know, I, I, I mean, I really start where, where I think the future is for the grade crew is a combined grade crew, bridge crew, construction crew. And, and us starting to, you know, cause if, if there's a dozer purchased, there's gonna be two dozers that leave, one's gonna be a D six T, and one's gonna be that, that international TD fifteen, both of those are gonna be sold, if there's a.
Probably get a decent resale on the dozer, though, yeah, they're more in demand.
That DD six should be really good money. I'm guessing in that hundred and fifty range, yeah.
Bet the whole, the assholes, forty dollars that I went with today's money.
Get money, yeah, you know, so.
There's just more uses for a dozer over a motor grader.
Oh, yeah, there's no resale on motor graders, that's, that's, I, I just don't know what else you do. You know, you, you know, every county faces that same dilemma, you have to buy them, and then have to use them for ten or twelve years. No one else wants them, the contractor will buy one, and they don't want the latest and greatest, a lot of times they'll buy a H or whatever they can get, and then they have any of the new emissions and all the new stuff on it, so they, you know, they can use it on their jobs, but, um, but that's something I, I think, you know, there's certainly maybe a little more discussion with the guys, too, we're demoing actually a D six K, a twenty-eighteen D six K today, they bought it down yesterday for us, mid-country K, let's have a D six K, it's just a different model. It's, it's a smaller unit, it's like half the size, it's a D six, but it's half the size of the V six Ts in terms of weight. And doesn't have the capacity push, but we're really looking for something to replace the dozer on the bridge crew. And, uh, so it's, it's a perfect fit for them, uh, we just gotta get the grade crews understanding what we're doing.
See, they got a KD.
No, they've got a D six E, or a D, a D six X E is what it is.
The big one.
That's the new one.
Yeah, that's the one, yeah.
But it's, it's a, it's a dozer that is there to push a lot of dirt, this is a finished dozer, and a, and a dozer for more, you know, finer, you know, you're not hogging dirt, you're just kind of getting it where there is, and, yeah. So for the bridge crew putting in pipes, bridges, and all the stuff they do, this is a perfect size, cause they were all up there yesterday, and it, you know, we're just kind of bringing some options in to take a look at it, and maybe it's a used one we end up with, you know, instead of a new one. So, so I think that's kind of on there, but I don't know where we'll land. Outside of a used one, of course, is you gotta use dozer, but then, you know, payment for it, like, if we did order a new one, um, you know, that probably would be available first thing in the spring, they'd probably defer payment till July, you know, a lot of the dealers, other than, you know, probably not gonna work with you, they may, you know, I don't know, I'm gonna focus them on that, but we don't want the one that we've got up here, it's, the reels are, were pretty bad on it, it's gonna need some money stuck in it, and so you know, that's the other downside, is, you know, right away you spend twenty-five or thirty grand on a used dozer to get it to where you want it. Looks like it's kind of had a little bit of a hard life, but just the bill, size wise, I just don't think we want that one, so. Um, but anyhow, um, so think about those things, I guess, um, you know, if you have any thoughts, let me know, but, um, I think it'd be a good idea to get them ordered, or get a, you know, get something going on. Um, the spray truck, you know, we talked about that a while back, um, you know, Kyle mentioned, you know, you know, to kind of bring that back up again, if you want me to bring it for approval, it's like the spray equipment's like one twenty-seven-five, the chassis is about sixty-seven-five, you know, in that range. Um, real close, I mean, I just rounded things off, but that's kind of where that's at, that would, that would require, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just, we've been thinking about it, you know, we talked about waiting or doing a budget amendment for it, but I, my opinion is we're gonna buy them regardless. Now, we've got a budget amendment coming, I think we just bite the bullet and get it bought, so we can use it so for next year. Otherwise, it'll be a year from now, like, we will just be getting. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and the other one's just getting, just showing its age, it was down quite a bit this past year, so.
Yeah, I'm with you, Kyle, I'd almost rather be up front and bite the bullets, you got it, use it, it's in our fleet. Versus, we're still gonna spend the same amount of money, if not more, wait another year, and we still don't have it at the time, you really need to you still gotta wait three months before you start using.
Yeah.
You guys let me know for sure, if you want me to bring it on for approval, I can do that, I'll talk to both of them.
There were some days, it sounded like the guys did as much drive, spent as much time driving back to town to fix stuff, and they, they were struggling with it.
Yes, well, repairs and, uh.
I was talking to.
Put it on the agenda for next week?
I'll be there. Okay.
Let's do it.
Okay. Uh, work on the county home farm, just let us know, um, you know, uh, taking the fence out and doing that that we looked at and talked about is no issue, I just think the trees and the CRP are maybe maybe a better option there than having us go in there with the next degree.
Yeah, I, our, our conservation department has a new shredder and
Yeah.
They said he would go out and try it out, and I'll figure it out.
Okay, well, we'll just plan on going and doing the fence whenever, are we good to go, or should we, do we need a?
I guess I'm just waiting to hear from the fence roaster when he's coming.
Okay.
You got, back to the guy.
And just let us know, give us, you know, all that data to notice.
Tell me just to get a whole game in, and that's what I'll do.
And just, yeah, yep, so, uh, just let us know.
Okay, which wouldn't have the, I just need to get it. I don't know, I was thinking about calling him this morning, and that's what I, all I did was I thought about it, and then I did, and then I just remembered it now.
Sounds good, but we just, you know, it's probably be good to get in there this fall, and.
I would agree, right.
It won't take us long to do it, we'll just, uh, find a day and send a guy in there for, go in there and do what he needs to do.
There we go, alrighty, thanks, Paul. Alrighty, we're back to our other agenda, uh, Nate, I see you out there ready to come up and give us a little update.
Pocahontas again this year?
Yeah.
Start yet?
Uh, we started opening that, it's about eighteen, just when we can actually start poaching, so it's forty-two, I think, I was.
My favorite season.
I don't know if work.
Is it usually within the first two weeks it goes down, or is that?
Well, like, my, yeah, the conditioning really kills a lot of the kids, so they'll, they'll collect the first week. But we got a lot of soccer guys coming out just for the endurance, so they'll be kind of surprised on what it requires, but I don't know, I, we think about thirty-five will stick, so. It should be fun. Alright, so there was an update last week, and it wasn't broadcasted, it wasn't sent out to any of the JCOs, to my knowledge. I called my state, uh, or excuse me, uh, DHS representative or a contact person, she wasn't aware of it. Um, and it sounds and it looks like as of July, excuse me, uh, yeah, July one of, of this year, um, the Department of Human Services no longer are covering like the full portion of shelter stays. Um, it's gonna be a portion, uh, of it's gonna be charged or billed to the county of the resident, and the only person, or the only shelter that's not doing that is Fort Dodge. Um, I was unaware of this, and, uh, we had bills come through on two kids that I've placed there, and it was, yeah, it was it was just a blind side, basically, and I wasn't aware of it, and, uh, it's I'm gonna fight it as far as paying it, because I don't think we should, since we weren't really properly informed of it. Um, but, uh, it's basically, it goes down to forty-six dollars and sixty-five cents a day is what we're being charged, and I had one kid there for probably three months, and it, it was just, it was an oversight, I think, uh, through the contract, um, that they had, I guess shelters had, and, and the contact we have with the HHS, no one told us. Um, and I, I'm saying that because there was no email, there was nothing, I, I'm not saying, you know, the Eastern JCO didn't see it. I'm just saying this side of the state didn't see it, uh, so it was definitely a, a blind side, so I wanted to at least get you guys informed on that, and I am gonna fight the, the invoice, or at least the bill that's coming to us, um, which is, I think first week was, I think it's like right around eleven hundred dollars, um, for that first month, and, uh, and if I did the math right, it's if we keep doing that, it's just gonna drain of the budget that, that I, that we have, so.
Just for every kid?
Every kid, uh, that resides in Crawford County that would go to a shelter outside of Fort Dodge will be charged forty-six dollars to the county that it resides.
So why does Fort Dodge not?
Don't know. Don't know. Uh, I don't know if they have a different type of contract or Crichton Center, I don't use much anymore, um, there's a lot of. Questions about that facility, so I haven't used that, uh, I don't know why Fort Dodge is doing it, uh, or not doing it and others are, so. Uh, it was unfortunate, but I just wanted to make sure you guys know, uh, we, we did stop, we did not request or approve the payment of it. Just because I wanted to get some details from my supervisor and as far as what to go, what to do forward.
What is your, your supervisor saying to, to fight it?
He wasn't happy, um, so our conversation last week, when she was on vacation during, um, she just said, don't pay it. I'm like, okay.
And he would actually work for the state of Iowa, you're.
My supervisor?
Supervisor.
Yeah, he's the same as, yeah, I do.
And somehow the state never let anybody know?
I wasn't aware of it. It was, it is a huge move and it sounded like it was quiet, um, and it was just one of those. I don't know if they were having a heart, so the explanation that I had was.
Don't seem to surprise any of us anymore.
It's only begun.
So, the entire bill was like two hundred and twenty-four dollars a day. Um, and a contract that was, and I looked through it and there, there was a signature for, and it looked like it was an electronic signature from HHS. And it was just copy and pasted, and I was like, okay, this, either one, and it had his name all the way through it, and it's like, alright, you signed it, but no one was. Informing us, unless I overlook something, which I keep all my emails and I search and I search and I search and I couldn't find anything. So, uh, but yeah, to, to, at the end of the day, it was just, it wasn't, uh.
If you, if we don't pay it, but it's just kind of gonna be a blow by this.
I, I'm gonna request that the state, the HHS pays for it, because if we're forced to pay it, then obviously we'll get to that point, but at this point. I, I, we have, we have dollars and, and what, what really stinks is our kids are staying in detention longer, which is why we're going to shelter. Cause we don't want them in sho- in detention for as long as we, you know.
There's not much room in detention for them either.
Right, and so like we pushed them out the shelter and now they're seeing more shelter stays because placements are down. Uh, facilities are getting closed, uh, it's harder to place a kid anymore, so it's forcing. Other JCOs to use shelters, and, and my mind, I think this is just a business decision, like, well, there's more place, more days stayed. Let's, uh, let's, and then the HHS is picking up that bill, they're like, well, let's give a portion of this to the county. And, yeah, and the judge, in my, judge is still gonna push shelter stays, they want, the judges want kids out of detention. Um, but, yeah, so that, eh, yeah.
In the shelter or are they getting some kind of rehab?
Oh, they're getting everything, yeah.
They're getting, okay.
Yeah, Crayton Center, no, but, uh, shelter in, uh, YSS and Ames. That I just started using three months ago, I love, absolutely great, they do school therapy. You can get a lot of your treatment started before going into placement, um, all that's there, and then this popped up, and it's like, well. Now I don't know if I wanna use it.
Have you talked to your other JCOs or, or other counties, and I mean, were they kind of blindsided too, they didn't?
I haven't heard yet, I, I got a state meeting next week with the new JCO Academy, so I'm gonna run it past, uh, some of the, uh, higher ups. And, I mean, yeah, it's great, but the answer is gonna be irrelevant, I just didn't know about it, and it's like, you knew about it, great, but where was the email?
Yeah, yeah, forward me your email.
Well, and a lot of it's like, this is a big move, like, sit down, let's have a conversation and. And then just let us know, so I can get this in front of you guys before July one, but we're well past July one.
Yes, we are.
So, anyway, I'm gonna do my best to try to sid- sideline this, um, YSS is great. If it is shelter stay and we are going YSS, then, uh, I'm gonna have a planted place for them to get in the shelter or, excuse me, placement a lot quicker. And so I don't have a kid staying in that for three months. Ultimately, maybe that's their push too, is, is we, we don't want kids in shelter for so long. But at this day, at this time, it's, it's kinda hard too, especially if the kid's very aggressive or, or the charge is pretty high.
So then, I mean, you, you don't really have a choice, do you?
There is probably, there's a small portion here where we're like, we just have to pay the forty-six, sixty-five, and, and I'm trying to not get to that point, but that's just high risk kids. Like if they're doing well in shelter and we're still looking for placement, then, well, we're just gonna have to use it. If he screws up or she screws up, then bang, we'll go back to detention and do that route. Um, but right now, I, yeah, it's just, we're in a different world as far as placements go. Than what we were like ten years ago, but, but no, I just figured you guys should know right away. But that's all I needed to inform you, if you guys have any questions, so.
Keep us informed.
From what Kyle and I see, we understand your struggle.
We can talk about that, bro.
So always coming up for proclamation for the green light veterans?
Thank you, that's how they're running.
I have no idea.
Doing that to our children. What do you think, now, now they're gonna run mental health?
It's not been a good day for news, uh.
No, it's gonna be run the same way.
Exactly the same way.
And go back to if you're gonna charge fines for it, give it to us, put it in our lap, pay us per capita and we'll come.
Worked fine.
And juvenile detention would be the best way, I do.
But you not let anybody know?
Well, that's gonna last though, I mean, they're, they're, they really gotta start reinventing this wheel, they do. It's, it's gonna, we're gonna have one of them things where it just keeps going and it's just gonna do on them.
You know, like you said, they keep closing facilities. So it just keeps pushing kids into detention.
Into the networking facilities. That's what I call them, jails and detention centers are for networking.
Back when I was still on the, uh, mental health board, that Crichton Center would count all the time for extra funding and. Ex, you know, they just couldn't, couldn't keep it funded with the money that they had way back then, so. And then now you find out we're not using them at all, so.
The wheel hasn't, hasn't been reinvented, it's just turning. Dr. Eric Skug, remember, the state used to be in control of mental health and all these things, and then they totally collapsed and they gave it to all the counties. And you're better at a local level, and now they're taking it back over again, it's just.
And, you know, uh, guys, remember when I used to always ask how many people from our actual county were using some of these facilities? And remember the answer was zero? Yeah, anyways, I digressed again, alrighty, so we have their next is, uh, take action on proclamation supporting Operation Green Light for the veterans. And so I'm a hundred percent in favor of having that proclamation.
Motion.
Green lights shine in the windows and everybody in town is like that.
I actually brought it up to the Legion post last night, I'm not even getting more of a mob to. Get the green light bulbs through people's front door.
Yeah, yep. Great awareness, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Uh, I'll call the motion on favor of the proclamation supporting Operation Green Light for Veterans, say aye. Any opposing sign? Proclamation has been, so, get the green lights going, our courthouse is ready to roll, I understand. Louis has that on.
She's got some new signs, she can, didn't talk about it, so it must be a secret. One?
Yeah.
On the thought?
Yeah. There's supposed to be three, only one should push it.
I will say with our JCOs, Crawford County has been very, very fortunate, I mean, we had Glenn for a number of years and then now having Nate. I mean, you can find more passionate guys to do their job.
You could not, but they need to have the information, and I feel badly and I can about imagine how that happened, they just didn't think it was important that they knew and. Um, well, at the end of the day.
I just say, we have two, we, we've had a history of. The best of the best for JCOs.
We absolutely have, so our kids are fortunate. Alright, our next item is appointment of Ashley Green, EMT as medical examiner investigator. She's passed all of her, her prior divorces.
I'm gonna appoint Ashley Green as medical examiner investigator.
A second.
Alright, any further discussion? Alrighty.
I have, just for argument of state, I think I'd ask, at what point do we have enough? Do we ever hit that point or not?
I don't know.
We don't pay them. Right?
Right, they only get paid if they.
If they go.
Have a call.
Other than the Rachels kinda started, uh. Where we're helping out with other things.
Yeah, I just, I. I mean, great, sometimes though you get too bigger numbers and then it becomes a, I don't know.
Normally that should take care of itself, if we have too many, then somebody's not getting involved in, uh.
It's nice that there's people interested in doing it. People stepping up to do it, I just, I don't wanna see it become a burden for Dr. Grabber, whoever it is, I might have some day to do it.
Yeah, I think he is.
Retired, so.
Alright, so that's, did I call that?
I wonder if there's anybody interested in doing that, if he would retire, I made a motion.
Yep, we have a second, about our discussion. Any further discussion?
None, none.
I'll call vote on favor, aye. Pose same sign. Uh, Ash Lady Green is now one of our EMT medical examiners.
Financial burden to us, we start willing to do it.
Yeah, there you go, that's what I was trying to, or I was trying to make.
Alright, so the next item, discussion, take action on lighting basement, uh, over at this triple C building, uh. Our, last week, the meeting got, uh, postponed because of a funeral. The gentleman who's coming along with Justin with the DMU had a funeral, so we are doing that today at one o'clock. And what we'll do is go through, assess the lighting that's there, what money savings we will have by having more efficient lighting. And then the abatements that are available to us, so we'll, uh, I'll meet over there at one o'clock to go through it with an expert from DMU. And then next week, if you'd be so kind as to, uh, let me put the findings of what we find out, found out on, back on the agenda.
Yeah, let's get that on, cause I think it's get to the point where. We're about done making dust downstairs and there won't be a lot of noise pollution down there anymore, so I think, uh, we get the lighting put in. And a final vacuuming upstairs, we can get Harvard Health moved in, and a great. That's my, I, I don't see what the hole that would be after the lighting.
I agree, and I felt bad that that got postponed because, but there, but there's a funeral.
Well, you can't, you can't help it.
So today at one o'clock, uh.
We can't predict a funeral, so I mean, that stuff happens. Don't feel bad about that, I mean, no.
Alright, so I will have a report and hopefully, uh, estimate.
Put that, I stopped over there this morning before here, they are tech through the wall this morning, so. And the Kennedy boys are gonna hang the ceiling, cause they were asking me questions about that. So I'm guessing that's all gonna happen real fast here. And then the flooring.
Already half paid for and so.
Amendments are ordered, and I wouldn't doubt they're probably already end up at iron, so.
I bet they are.
So I'm guessing this thing's gonna start rolling pretty quick.
Well, good news.
It's gonna be fabulous.
So. It's gonna hap.
We'll have, that'll be on the agenda and we'll know what lighting's gonna go in there, might as well do it, right, so, uh, cell phone policy.
You need lighting for the basement, they're putting. Cell phone policy.
Cell phone policy.
So this kinda spurred with Paul last week came in and, and I know it was kinda hectic with public hearing and everything going on, and he had mentioned that. He was gonna pay for a upgraded phone for, um, foreman, I think it was Sean. Above and beyond what Paul said, I, I think we all kinda, I don't know, for myself, I wasn't fully, fully aware of all the details, so when he went in to talk to Michelle. Said, oh, wait a second, our policy says, here is your list of phones of Verizon, anything over, this list that are zero trade-ins is, comes out of your own pocket.
Yeah, Colin did that, he paid it.
Right, I think Jake did also. Right, and, uh, I think it's good to have on the agenda, just so that we are all aware, what it, what the policy actually is. Cause Michelle said, well, wait a second, our policy is that you have to pay for it, I'm, I'm probably, Kyle, and I did go downstairs and talk to Paul, Paul had said that.
He just, he paid for it, that's what I understood it. He said he, me, Sean.
Or Paul.
Or Paul, they, they were just covered the above cost.
But it shouldn't have come out of his. His, uh, department funds, because that's not a policy. Right, unless you all want it to be your policy, that's, I mean. So I think to make us all aware that, that's been our practice.
And if we wanna change that practice, it needs to be done by board action.
Right, right.
I'm fine with the policy as, is the majority of the folks that have a, uh, county phone, just use it for just business, and I don't know what.
There is a list of phones, and my own question, just plain devil's advocate is, I, I don't know what the history of those. Phones that trade in for equal amounts that we don't, that aren't above and beyond, have they stayed the same ever since we've had this policy, do you know? The people that have paid for their phone? No, and then the phones that Verizon offers as trade-ins for the zero. I mean, they always become newer, of course, they're not the newest. Phone available. But. I guess I'm, as department head and Sherry, you're here too, does that policy fit your needs for cell phones?
Well, we don't have one, that's why I wanted to hear what this policy was all about.
We don't have one here, as the board supervisors.
Where'd you go?
I don't want that.
I do not need two phones to carry around, I'm more than glad to just have the phone I paid for and.
But like the foreman, I mean, there's certain. People that do definitely, Dave, I mean, there's definitely need a county phone.
They're actually carrying two phones with them, they're personal and they're.
Yeah, I mean, when I called Dave, he called his county foreman.
Right, and when, man, when Dave's gone, he leaves that county phone.
Here, in the auditor's office.
Yeah, so, and he's, you know, does it probably need a iPhone?
He don't, I don't think he needs any fancy, but I know like Paul stated, that his foreman liked to be able to pull up weather apps and stuff for that. Make sure to be able to check weather during whatever, winter storms or. Twenty-eight warnings, whatever, they.
Road condition, or where in the corner they get to go.
Yeah, you know, so.
But that would be.
I can see why they want an upgraded, more faster, more technology.
I mean, some of the free ones offered, I think are smartphones, so it's not like.
Offers that just to counties?
No, yeah, that's our policy anyways, as the question is, the list of what Verizon offers, is that, it's, if it does? I think it has, and if it's, and like we said, if it doesn't and there's say a thirty dollar. I think the fee, extra fee for some of these phones, even a more upgraded, is thirty dollars, um. It comes out of not the county budget. And I think from what Michelle showed us from the list, there's like thirty and up to like one fifty or sixty, if you wanted to go the brand, brand new, that would come out of your own pocket. I'm not advocating for any of that, I'm just. Right, making sure we're all aware, here's, there's a list of phones that are acceptable for.
That way we can act accordingly, comes up again and we.
Right.
I think that's fair, we, these are the phones the county pays for, if you want anything over and above that, that would come out of your own pocket. Cause they're not offering a flip phone, it's not like that, they're.
Right, it's not like, uh.
Nothing against a flip phone.
They're not cheap.
No, it's, it don't matter.
But to Sherry's point, who doesn't have a phone, but you're saying you'd like a phone?
Well, I didn't know, I mean, I didn't realize, we have to use our personal phones for a lot of county business on a daily basis, I don't know about other offices, but. Um, I, I mean, I'm sure Terry's office does as well.
Yeah, my percentage would be about eighty percent county and the rest.
And we're, we're paying out of our pocket to use that for county business.
So if you wanted a county phone and it's, and that, that would be something you'd have to add to your budget then, that you.
I'm good.
I'm good, I don't need a county cellphone.
Man, I get, I, I guess mine's. Regardless if I use it, a hundred phone calls for the county a day or.
Hasn't increased my bill at all, so.
If you wanted to have like a phone that you keep in your office that is, just stays in the office. If somebody needs to call a customer, you can use that one phone, you know, cause you're not outing about like the, uh, road crew or.
Is there phone lines in?
I mean, we have pretty nice.
Are you guys using your cell phones, is our phone line inadequate enough for it, or is there a personal, or what?
No, we got the new phone lines and we don't go down as much as we do, that's a definite improvement.
It's because we're down, is, that's the reason why your cell phones are getting used?
We have a lot of the two factor authentications where you have to have code sent to your phone to enter, to get into certain programs. And then we have a lot of, um, customers that want to, they'll call and leave us a message and they'll say, text us back. Well, I don't want my staff to have to text them on their phones.
Personal phone.
And that new texting option that Jake is working on, that'll help with that.
Right, if we can get that to go through, that might help a lot.
Maybe that's a benefit.
That probably warrants maybe having a cell phone, cause there's no sense, I don't. I don't see a staff needs to risk.
Moving out their personal cell phone.
Personal stuff to, for county use, I mean, having their phone get infected with some virus cause of the county business, I mean.
Or have somebody calling them all hours of the night, asking questions because they had.
I just curious if our, where.
Our phone numbers are.
Definitely helped that. But before, we're on the frontier, we have these.
If you had one for your whole entire office that, right, covered those places, then we just could have to budgeting it in.
I mean, how, how many phone, we have, Jake's here. I mean, how many phone, Jake's here, how many, how many phones do we pay? I mean, you go through the bills and certainly there's numerous Verizon cellphone charges that we pay for.
There's fifty-five phones in the courthouse itself.
In the courthouse.
Yeah, that's excluding public, both cell phones.
Cell phones.
That one is.
Michelle would know that. Michelle would know.
Number for a question.
Departmental, they're, they're just setting this down.
How many phone numbers are on our bill?
Cell phone, well, it seems like we get numerous bills, because we don't pay just one charge. Verizon's listed more than one.
Well, each department pays their own bill, their own portion of the bill.
I mean, secondary roads had. And that was your secondary roads.
But you get out there in the snowstorm, you don't wanna have a cell phone that works. I get that.
And we got radio too, but.
Yeah. Well, I think we're okay with the policy the way we have it at this time, because we just got a new phone system and we're looking at a texting option on our phones and so.
But I don't think that means that you can't put one in your budget if you really feel it's warranted.
Well, I mean, I'd like to know more about
We can discuss it during budgeting.
How much we're paying for the cellphone versus how much we're gonna pay maybe for the new texting option would be another thing to consider.
That would be a good comparison.
Right.
Yep. Because that.
Because my office would use the texting feature a lot. That's the way the customers are going. Most of them want us to communicate with them that way. The ones that work at Farmland or any of the other packing houses, they can't just take a call during the day. A lot of them don't have voicemail set up or it's full. So if you could shoot them a message that said, we've got your paperwork done, or your plates came in, stop by the courthouse. It would make things a lot smoother.
We talked about that. It was a concept I, you know, I was starting to figure out if it's, you use your computer and it actually comes on the telephone. So that might be a step into the right directions.
Jake, how far out do you think realistically having that texting option for Sherry or Terry or the courthouse to be able to use from an email to a text?
So I was kinda, I'm gonna say, I won't say run around, but there was a, I had an issue with Tony as far as trying to find an onboarding process and a, and the way to get it done, okay? And originally I was thinking, it was a privacy policy that was hanging us up that we had to have posted for the provider to say that we're not gonna do these nefarious things.
Okay.
And to let our citizens know that we're not gonna do these spam and spam and use their information for other purposes and things along those.
That makes sense.
So, but talking to Tony yesterday, he sent me an email saying, alls I gotta do is get department buy-in and I can get that process rolling. So do I wanna stay maybe a month? Maybe a month and a half, depending on how the legalese with the privacy policy and how quickly you can get that in place.
A month and a half, what, what cost would be, because it's gonna be cheaper just to get a couple cellphone lines.
Well, it's fifteen dollars per number per month.
Wow, that'd be two for a cell phone.
So.
Per number though.
And one of the things, I didn't mention this, I mentioned this in the committee and Sherry noticed this as well, is that we can use existing phone numbers, okay? We don't have to get a new number for texting. Okay, so if you have a department number, you can actually use that for texting.
So potentially you can have one in Sherry's office, one in Terry's office, one.
Exactly.
So forget the fifty-five phones that you just mentioned, so that wouldn't be.
No, this is, it's not like we would be providing the proper phone that's out there. This is just like being one for department, for department. Okay, depending on who, what department wants to buy into this.
And it's per department.
Which would make more sense than having a cellphone. I mean, but I was thinking if it was gonna take a year or two to implement.
No.
In short term here.
Yeah. It's, the other thing is, is that there's no contract. So if you want in and you say, I don't like it, next month you don't, you don't get out of it. So it's not, it's not the answer, you know, stay, to stay with them for a year, years or whatever. So it's just a matter of, again, I wanna confirm that I got all my department heads, because I did find out in the last committee meeting that there were more department heads that wanted in on this. So I wanna confirm that and then I'm gonna move forward and get some phone numbers.
Can't we start moving forward and just start adding departments so we can start using it?
And see how it works. Yeah, I just wanted to get it all one done in one push. And it wouldn't take that long to
Get it done.
One of an email to the, hey, what phone number do you wanna use and do you wanna get in on this?
Well, shoot, I had to say, shoot that out right away. Sherry's ready to go, so.
Sounds like it's a good idea. Get her going.
Because you, Craig and Martha say they were gonna talk about what texting option.
Alright.
Yeah, shoot that email out, see who you got and.
Yeah, that's actually my thought. It's just get it done, get it done. So.
Alright, there we go. So that's a non-issue.
Good conversation.
Alright, perfect. Next thing we have is citizens input. Sherry or Jacob, do you have anything on citizens input?
No, I just had something I was talking about before the meeting. I'm just looking for a little bit of direction from the board on the, the redundant internet. We did talk about maybe putting an antenna over between the two buildings, between the courthouse and public health to use that as possible redundancy. But I was told to kinda come back during citizens input for some further input on that.
Okay.
Instead of using this five thousand four fifty or whatever, have an antenna, is that a directional antenna?
Pretty much.
Between the two buildings, with the redundancy.
Using a wireless deal is a redundant deal, because redundancy is, there's a, in the event of a gee, there's an emergency deal, so.
Yeah, I could also.
Why spend four hundred and fifty dollars a month to have something there just in case, whatever, could have this there in case we need it.
Yeah, that's just seems like a lot.
That it's not gonna cost us nothing every month to have it something there.
Let's do that.
No.
And we don't have to spend thirty thousand dollars to have it installed.
Yeah. The, the only thing I did do is I did petition to see, hey, what can they do for us to keep the monthly price the same as what it currently is? Haven't heard back yet. That was before the meeting started, okay? So I just sent that email, just to see what they could do, if they could do anything without, you know, breaking the bank in any sense. So, do you guys still wanna get an outcome of that conversation?
I don't know. Kinda like if the wiring's paid to shoot it across there. For a couple hundred bucks, the worth of antennas were up and running.
Let's do that. I don't, we kinda didn't see this.
Yeah, I think they kinda priced themselves right out of our thought process.
Yeah.
I mean, otherwise give me a spool of phone line and get the Dallas and Fire Department's ladder truck, I could have wires strung across there.
We used to run wire to communication across the forest when I was in the army.
Little, little roll, little roll of comm wire, it'll be up there. So, that's, that's, I think that's my opinion.
Especially since it's your redundant system, maybe it's in your primary system. It's kinda like the old saying, you can be insurance board.
Right.
We have to make sure that we walk that line of what our true, our needs are and that we cover them, but not go broke doing it.
Just for, just so you got all the things in front of you here, that fiber ring does offer a secondary redundancy within itself. Okay, because it is the fiber ring, so it has two degress points.
Well, so you're gonna be redundant, redundant.
Exactly.
Redundant, redundant.
Yes. Okay.
That's like having a combine and then another combine.
Yeah.
And then back up the third combine.
And back up the third.
Yep. So.
Take two of them out of the ship.
Yeah.
I think.
Holy wow.
That's a definition of a BTO.
Our second assessment, I think you've covered some of that.
Would it, Jeff, tell you as far as?
The need for redundancy to triple C building and how we're providing that.
Well, I mean.
I mean, would they, would they look into that?
They would. I don't know if it's gonna, yeah, I guess it would be an item that they would probably look over.
I guess I'm just curious, I mean, if we're doing a second assessment, but what's their input on that? Are they gonna say, well, this is totally not what you need for that? I mean, you need to have a redundant, redundant, redundant system.
Right. Well, the fiber rings, okay, we've got it here too, so. But one of the things I'm gonna make a note to note about is, okay, right now we have just public health in that building that did have, that does have redundant internet in it, okay? Now you're going to another building that has more services on it with the VA being there, and you're taking away the redundancies. Uh, option with the exception of the antenna, okay? So just, so you have everything in front of you when you, when you, when you're looking at this, so.
How many times have we ever used our redundant?
Well, yeah, whatever, I mean, we've had a couple of failures on the year regarding the fiber ring, despite its redundancies here, okay? Um, so ba- basically, so you understand is, right here, we have, we're on the ring first and then we go to Western Iowa Networks, okay? Over there, they have Western Iowa Networks first and then they have the ring. And the reason why it was done that way was because Western Iowa Networks had the faster internet over there. Here it was the same between the two. Can I remember that? So, um, so just understand that's, that was the way it was done that, done, so.
What's the longest time we've been out?
So there's a four hour response on the ring. So they had to have that thing back up and running within four hours, okay? Western Iowa Networks, that connection, that's, it's just a business class internet. There's no SLA associated with it. It gets up when they get, when they get it up, so.
Okay. My question is, so we got our wireless speed shooting back there and it's hooked to the redundant ring or Western Iowa Wireless, whatever, but it's wired.
Okay.
It's still gonna be pretty quick, wirelessly. It's gonna lose a little bit, but it'll be pretty fast.
Only for an emergency.
Sure.
For emergency uses.
Yep.
So they'll still be able to operate at a, maybe a slower speed.
Yeah, it's gonna be a slower speed. Your, the phones, if there's gonna be any like issues as far as the, the connection, the first, the first thing that's gonna melt is the phones. They're gonna, because data goes first in most scenarios.
So it's gonna be like that internet at my house. Every once in a while, the TV will be like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'll be like lighting up my house every day.
You might have a blip on the voice side of it, because that, that's the most sensitive.
So, I mean, I think a guy could live with that, person can live with that in an emergency, in an emergency situation. Just like we downsized the generator to, for emergency uses.
Only.
For only emergency uses.
We're not lighting up Christmas tree.
I think we're, we're trying to think, this is only for emergency.
Yeah. Alright, we've made progress today.
We'd be perfectly fine. Instead of spending four hundred and fifty dollars monthly fee plus the one time thirty thousand dollar installation fee. At least for now.
For now.
And if we find two years from now this don't work, let's change it.
Okay.
Sounds good. Alright, progress has been made. Decisions have been made, so.
Sounds good.
Very good. Alright, that's it for citizens input.
No, I was gonna bring a little bit of the juvenile detention.
Go ahead, you're on.
What some of the things Kyle said was a lot of the similar, similar things they're having over here. I mean, they have unruly, unruly detentionees. I think it's good that you know, what's that?
What you said, over here.
Central, central aisle. Juvenile detention. Eldora, as we called it when I was a kid, Eldora. Anyway. They're, they're very limited in what they can do with the kids disciplinary wise. I mean, they can, they can send to their room, but it's only like a half hour. I mean, and they can literally like attack one of the employees. And that's all you can do, put them in their room for a half hour. If they're really unruly, they actually have to call in law enforcement. And I, I doubt it's any different than any of the detention centers, you know? What Tony's finding now, and I don't know that pay would suffice this, is there's people that are just, I'm not doing this. You know, so now we could end up at some point in the future where you can't even get anybody to work in these detention center. And that, I, I don't, you never really emphasize that much, but as you're sitting there listening to him, that was where my mind went right away. I wonder how long before we can't get people, in particular, the ones that have to deal with them at night or something, how long for people that I'm not dealing. They had an instance here, I think this last week, or two weeks ago, I guess it'd be. Or they, they couldn't get a kid to, that he was in the new section where they could keep him in a day room area, but he wouldn't go to bed. Now, there was two of them at first. They were fighting and raising Cain and doing whatever, if I understood it right anyway. But then the one they got him, they went, went in and got him to go to his individual quarters. But the other guy, he wouldn't, he got up, he's urinating all over the place, doing all kinds of crap. I mean, this is the stuff they're putting up with in these.
How old would these kids be just?
Less than eighteen.
Less than eighteen. I mean, and there's some kids that are pretty ding young.
What's the youngest that they can?
I don't, the youngest I remember talking about, yeah, I was gonna say, twelve year old I remember talking about, but there could be younger. And here's the problem, now because you have, and this, this to me, and Kyle brought up a good point, that, that you, the adult charge is actually the one that broke up their riot up there. But a lot of times, you know, some of these older, more mischievous ones, the kids that are in there on a misdemeanor, maybe not such, such a serious but, you know, if they're in detention, they've done something serious enough, you know? However, it's, they're, they're like little conference rooms or no conference centers, you know, this is where they network, they go together and they network. And I mean, kids that you probably had a chance, you know, when you had the state schools and stuff of actually getting them on the right track maybe, or some type of a stake. You know, like the facilities that, that he was talking, Nate was talking about. The, that, that, this is, I'm finding it kinda troubling. How long before we're, I mean, we're already, we just built that and really we're almost at capacity. With all the new stuff. I mean, you guys are probably at capacity, are pretty close.
Pretty close, but then the state won't allocate more beds.
They won't allow more beds, but that's the other thing, though, is our capacity, the reason we're at it is because of employee. We're, we're, we're at a limit with the people that are on hand, you know, in Eldora. Cherokee ain't much different. You're, you're out in a small community. You know, so your access, they're bringing in people from Waterloo to work there and, and Ames, I don't know if anymore if they got Ames. But, you know, bringing people in from further out to work in these places, I mean, and if, if kids know they don't have, you can't discipline them. They're not gonna get disciplined, you know what I mean? They're gonna, they ain't gonna do it themselves, is my point, you know? So I mean, to me, that's why when I said reinventing the wheel, we've got to figure out a better way to deal with probably the, the detention system from juvenile clear up to adult. I mean, I don't know, you know, and I don't just mean throw money at it. I mean, we probably need to throw some serious thought into this for a change, you know? Instead of just putting people out of, in a, in a jail so that we don't have to deal with them. I mean, that sometimes it feels like we do. I don't know, you know, mental health, I mean, them cops from San Antone, you know, they, they really changed things around down there, well, at least until.
I think the state had a pretty good grasp on some of this, though, but through mismanagement and not wanting to slap anybody's hands, they just closed facilities.
Yeah. I mean, and that's what I'm worried is, you know, what if a Cherokee says, like, you're, you know, like Tony's worried about employees and stuff, all of a sudden they say, I just can't afford the detention because I don't have any people and money's not bringing them in anymore? They just, I'm not gonna deal with this, it's not a safe environment. I mean, would you wanna work in one of them? When the kids can come up and jack you in the face and that's it? There's nobody just, there's no discipline for that?
No, thank you.
Well, there you go. I mean, so that's, I wouldn't want it either, because I'd wanna goodnight. Wouldn't wanna put on like that, but I'd like to take a nap.
They do get, they do get aggravated assault charges, I think, throw it against them, so they get some escalated to maybe adult charge then, but still, no.
That's a badge of honor in that system, though.
Yeah.
That's the sad part.
I got you guys.
I mean, see, you, you see what Kyle and I look at every meeting when we sit there and listen to this, sometimes you hear they have success and you go, oh, and then they give you that part. And you're, and then you look at that detention, I don't have my paper pack.
And they give them rewards for doing the right thing? And they reward them for doing the right thing?
The ones that did the right thing are adult charged murder one, they're not going anywhere.
Yeah, yeah.
They're, they're in the system for the rest of their natural life.
Yeah.
They're not going anywhere.
And as soon as they turn eighteen, they're out. That's, that's when you'll get rid of them, because they're going to a whole time country, man.
You can't reward them, but then early out, they're not going anywhere.
Give them a Snickers bar or whatever. It's, you know, it's tough right now, I mean.
It's real sad to see them.
It's frustrating listening to that. I mean, and our commission is, you know, I mean, I don't know, what are we, thirty-four counties in there, you know? And, I mean, and the expenses of dealing with this stuff is getting astronomical, I mean, now we. And, I mean, and the expenses of dealing with this stuff is getting astronomical. I mean, now we've actually gonna, like. Uh I think they call them affiliate counties, if I remember right, that's our term. Affiliate counties, they, they elected to not do, you're either a member, come in to be a member county and apply to be a member county, or you're gonna have to pay the non-affiliated rate. Because it's just too expensive. I mean, and then that's obviously, you know, if, if, if they don't have to pay. Their fair share, then it's gonna end up falling on the member county. So then what's the point of being a member?
That's what we had discussed years ago.
Yeah. So I mean, that, to me, there's. This is, that's why I said, this is kinda. The balloon's getting full, you know, getting bigger. That's, this might be something we have, you know, it's, but it's the society in general. I mean, this permissive nature and people just. Their, their lack of discipline seems to be expanding, you know? And then when you got people that are troubled individuals to begin with, you know, it's just making it worse. I don't know, what do you think, Kyle? That's how you feel with the reports you keep getting?
Yeah, it's just like, you can, the lack of home.
Yeah.
And the lack of two parent homes, that, I, I think.
I don't know what the answer.
The lack of structure at home is, I think is the biggest.
Yeah.
Problem with this. I mean.
I mean.
And the lack of, well, my kid, that's, my kid didn't do that.
Yeah.
You know, when we were growing up, you got in trouble at school, you didn't want mom and dad to find out about it.
No, you didn't.
You would take your detention or your paddling at school.
Can I have an in-school suspension?
Yeah, we didn't want mom and dad to find out about it. It's gonna be worse.
Yeah.
Now they just run home and tell mom that you got, dad, you got in trouble at school and they going, my kid didn't do that. How dare you accuse my kid of doing that?
Yeah.
That's what I found was troubling when I was on the school board. It's like.
Yeah.
Funny.
How can, how can.
I've always never wanted a.
We're going out road, you're never gonna.
Just imagine when your father is your teacher for two years.
Well, that's, that's why you're such a good student.
He kinda knew the answer to that.
You're right.
But Ty, it's odd that you would use the analogy that the balloon is getting full because you know what happens to a balloon when it gets too full. That's uh kinda scary.
Yeah.
Using that.
You know, that's why I use that analogy, cause that's what I see.
I know.
You know, and, and yeah, that would be, but that's a long-term fix is to start to recondition society.
Sherry's got her end of.
Oh, I'm just wondering Ty's done.
Oh, that's, that's a long-term fix to recondition society, you know, to get back to where, you know, that you're teaching the compassion towards fellow men. That's, that's one of the things that's missing.
Been a slowly eroding of society that has got us here.
Yeah. So it's not gonna be a quick refix on that, on that, on that particular aspect. I mean, people say whether you took. The family unit and you started to dissolve it. I don't, you know, it's dissolved on its own to some degree. I don't think you can blame the government for everything, you know?
Right.
But, you know, the lack of faith in the household. You know, I mean, you look at families that have good, a good faith base, you know? I'm not gonna tell you their kids don't ever get in trouble, but I'm gonna tell you that, you know, there tends to be less. And, I mean, I don't know, I don't know how you, there's no quick fix for this. So we got, but we do have to start thinking of, you know, we can't keep sweeping, hold that rug up. I'm gonna sweep this, cause if we keep doing that, the balloon's gonna pop. And like, but when you started talking about things and I just see the same issues for you or over there in Central Iowa, so you gotta even imagine that Des Moines is dealing with.
I think the same thing nationwide.
Yeah.
I'm sure it is.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, most of the time, I, I remember being in the army. One of the things I got told was, we like kids from the Midwest. They're taught discipline, they're taught hard work, they're taught to care about their. You know, so we like to put them in leadership roles when they're in basic training because they're already ready for it. I don't know if we are so much anymore, you know, I mean, I think it's a, I think it's a national issue. I mean, I think so still are, my opinion. I just, you know, these are the things that, that you're, we're getting. Unfortunate chance to be, be able to see with these detention centers. So anyway, that's, well, I just wanted to kinda emphasize a little more on that. Cause I think it's something we need to think about. And I think mental health's a big part of this, I really do.
I think it all coexists.
No, cause.
Yeah, it's all, all part of the same, same, same pool.
Yep.
Jerry?
Sorry.
This whole thing just brought up something that I wanted to bring to your attention. Uh I don't know if you guys are familiar with our sovereign citizen that we have. Um, we had a gentleman, we had a sovereign citizen that was pretty unruly right about the time that I started because he hadn't paid his taxes. And it went to tax sale and the investor started the ninety day redemption. And he was very. Kind of very forceful, kinda scary, you know, dealing with him. And he finally came in and he paid his taxes, paid in cash, which he had to do. Was very nasty at the counter, threatening, you know, I felt like he was very threatening. Well, since he came in and paid, like I said, that's when I first took office, he hasn't paid his taxes since. So guess what's happened? It's all back to the ninety day redemption. He's calling, threatening again and saying that, you know, I'm not doing my job as an elected official and that I should be protecting his rights. He shouldn't have to pay. And he's also sent a, an email, and I'll be happy to share with you guys, to the um. Tax sale investors saying that they have no right to um take, you know, try to start taking legal action to get his property. But the sovereign citizen feels like he shouldn't have to pay anything that we're taxing him for a property that is not income bearing or anything like that. And I just, I don't know if he'll contact you guys. I have forwarded the emails to Kyle, like he's in the loop, just like. Uh Roger was, Roger was the county attorney at the time the first one went around. And we've got a file in our office with his information in it, but because he called me, I didn't know if he would reach out to you guys. His name's Robert Sobich. He lives somewhere on um.
I remember that dude.
Yep.
First time.
So it's all starting again because the investor has sent a letter saying. Get this paid or we're gonna start a ninety day redemption once we take into your property and not give it back. So he's, he's uh. Got his feathers ruffled again. He's getting pretty.
Because he's a sovereign citizen, he doesn't believe he needs to pay taxes. I just wanted to add.
We think since you had a sovereign country in the middle of.
Is that what every sovereign citizen believes? Is that the basis of their uh wanting to be one? Is that they don't have to pay taxes or what? Or.
At least he did it before.
What's the definition of a sovereign citizen?
I think they're just, they claim they're their own country.
Yeah.
They're their own country?
Their own little country. You don't. They don't know the United States anything. They don't, they need to drive their license.
Yeah, I've, I've seen that.
They don't need to pay taxes to anybody.
They're Christian.
That's.
Which in turn they shouldn't receive any services.
So if their house was not buying.
Sovereign little sort.
Yeah. Who would have to send anybody?
Yeah.
Right, and.
Legally, we wouldn't have to send anybody.
Alright.
But yeah, like I said, I just wanted you to know that um. That I, I would not be surprised if he goes to try not to, you guys as well. So this kinda be.
We're in.
Did he contact the last time Kyle, when?
I just remember, I think it ended up going to, I know the board of adjustments, I think was ended up being involved with it. And I think they had a meeting.
One institution.
Sheriff's Department was there.
Forward.
That meeting.
With.
Say we would have a. Nine one one board meeting or something that, that same night. That's how I was there. I remember that. And. Yeah.
Well, all.
I don't think I was ever contacted personally, I'll bet you.
And we have no right to do this.
And the jury doesn't vote.
Interesting.
Interesting. We just have one in Crawford County that you know of?
That's all I know of.
I heard of another one that came in trying to start claiming sovereign citizenship, but I don't know.
Okay.
I think you, you sound like you're up on top of it. You got Colin aware.
Right. I just wanted you guys to know because I feel like he could contact you guys as well.
He could.
And like I said, I've got.
I'm very advice of counsel. I know nothing.
Well, he, he doesn't believe they're elected officials.
The irony about it, we sovereign, why is he reaching out?
Yeah.
You know, why would you reach out to somebody that's.
Yeah. That's the craziest thing ever. I'm gonna look.
We don't represent you.
Well, all the couriers you guys, most recent email that we got from him, because nothing else will buy it.
Do that. Maybe his phone number's on it and I could call him.
Interesting. I bet somebody's looking that up right now, sovereign citizen.
I did, and it was quite lengthy.
I'll call him from Ty's phone. There's no pay. Call the jury as well. Do that every now and again.
Well, okay.
Are we done? We need to motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Second.
I'll better, I.
Aye.
We're now adjourned. Neat, perfect.
I have Dennis Hubert, who's doing this fencing.
The Dallas is doing it?
Yeah.
Oh.
He's just letting go for UPS.
My dog thinks it's a little higher. I know our cat.